Okay. Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order January 2nd, 2025 at 9:32. First business transaction that we have is the election President for 2025. Do need to open nomination for President.
Mr. Clark, I make a motion to nominate Eddie Gogonauer for President for the Commission.
Okay, we have motion on the floor. Gogonauer, it's be President. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, if I must be catlit. Okay, is there any further discussion on the motion?
There's no other nominations. I move nominations be closed.
Okay. Nomination closed by Mr. Whitaker. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now we will have the sworn in of the President. Gogonauer, you want to come around front, please? Before we start, I just want prevention since I am still in charge, whatever budget I don't like. Is there any problem?
Here, here, Mr. Clark.
Okay. Before me, Anthony J. Petrusi, Clerk of the County and the State, April Seid personally appeared. Eddie Gogonauer, Gogonauer has been appointed as the President of the Berkeley County Commission. The tribe calling votes. Aye.
Aye, Eddie Gogonauer.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
The Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
Aye.
Aye, Eddie Gogonauer.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of President.
That I will. Office, I will.
Faithfully.
Faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of President of the Berkeley County Commission.
That's my skill and judgment.
That's my skill and judgment.
So may God.
So may God.
Congratulations, sir. Let's again. Yes, sir. All right. One down, one to go. Do need to have the election of the Vice President for 2025 of the Berkeley County Commission. Many nominations on the floor, please?
I would like to nominate Steve Catlet, Vice President.
Let's on the floor to nominate Mr. Steve Catlet for Vice President. Is there a second?
Second.
Whitaker. Any further discussion? If not, all those favor say aye.
Aye.
Same side, nay. The facts, so. Catlet, you want to come up and get sworn in? Forgot my box. Before me, Andy J. Petrusi, Clerk of the County and the State, April Seid personally appeared. Stephen Catlet, who has been appointed as the Vice President of Berkeley County Commission. The tribe calling votes. For him. Aye.
I support Steve Catlet.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of West Virginia. Aye.
Aye.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Vice President of the Berkeley County Commission.
Of the Office of Vice President of the Berkeley County Commission.
That's my skill and judgment. So may God.
So may God.
Congratulations, sir.
Doug Moeller.
Doug Moeller, yeah, that's it. It doesn't really talk around.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. That's for taking. Musical chairs?
Musical chairs. Lie down, Steve.
Want me to go down there?
That's all right. Come down here beside the W. There, man. Two of us, we're always at the end of the line. We might. The W's. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Everybody on the right place? There we are. Thank you.
First off, Mr. Whitaker, I'd like to thank you for your two years as our President and the leadership that you provided.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's appreciated and respected and great job.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyd.
Yes, sir.
You were sworn in this morning, sir. Congratulations on your reelection and appointment to the Commission.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Hardy, welcome aboard, sir.
Thank you.
We expect great things out of you.
I'm looking forward to working hard.
Yeah, I know you are.
Congratulations on presidency.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Catlet, congratulations on your appointment to Vice President. See you as well, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's get down to the real stuff here. I don't know if you ever gallows in, but we are in session and items from the public.
I just got the, I had time to read it. They said they mailed it out December 27th, and they're saying they can't do anything. But the thing of it is, y'all do have involvement with, y'all do have involvement. Is this the one?
Yes, if you would, Ms. Hyatt, just hang on for a second.
Okay. Because I just got.
We've allowed you to come in as you should be able to, obviously, to speak openly and freely for as long as you choose. So unless you have something new to add.
Well, it is new because I'm not getting heard. I feel like I'm not being heard and so much stuff is happening, but I'm not being heard. And I just got this, so I haven't even had a chance to read it. So I'll just come back next Thursday if you like, because I'm not being heard. I mean, things have happened and I'm just not being heard, and I think it's not right. It's not fair. I mean, people can do what they want in this county and nobody's held accountable for it, and it's not right. I'm sorry. You might not like what I say, you might not want to hear it, but it's not right. And things need to be done right in this county. And you can push me to the side, but I'm not the only one out here that's going through this midlife crisis. It is not right, and you're right. You have allowed me to come in here. And I come in here decent, respectful.
Respect.
And the thing of it is, none of y'all are feeling my pain because it's not right. Y'all can give me all the lyrics, everything, but when you have the Sheriff Department making lies up and all that. But it's fine, since I'm not able to get any help here, I will just do what I need to do.
Thank you, ma'am. On the purchase law. I'm sorry, let me back up. Need to approve the agenda for January 2nd?
There's no modifications or changes. I move we accept it as presented.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any further questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. Thank you. Moving on to the purchase law. Have any questions on the law?
Just a statement from your administrator. I like the size of it.
It's a little short today.
I noticed that. I was like, there's not much of it.
Ninety-two pages, yeah.
One of the shortest ones I've ever seen.
Without my glasses on, I thought it said a beer can. I said, that's beer, bear con.
We do have two internal budget revisions. Mr. Wine will go over those for us.
Yes, sir. The first one is from Clerk Petrusi. In his voter's registration account, he's asking for your approval to decrease publications by 15,000 to increase materials and supplies by the same. The second one also for voter's registration to reduce maintenance and repair by 10,000 and increase professional services by the same 10,000.
All right. Change in status. A letter of resignation has been received by the Honorable Katie DeLaGuetti, the prosecuting attorney for Chelsea Shockey for a position of legal assistant effective January 6, 2025. A letter of resignation has been received by Gary Wine, County Administrator for Commissioner James Barnhart, effective December 31, 2024. A letter of resignation has been received by Gary Wine, County Administrator for Prosecuting Attorney Katie DeLaGuetti, effective December 31, 2024. The December meeting of '26, everybody was present with the exception of Commissioner Boyd. So we'll need a motion to approve the consent agenda. So move?
Second.
Then properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And let the record show that Commissioner Boyd abstained from the vote. And Hardy, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. We don't have anything this week from the Assessors' Office. So Board and Meeting reports. Mr. Boyd.
I just had the museum board meeting, but there was a problem with the Zoom and some things, and I was out of town, so wasn't able to attend. But I have scheduled a meeting with the President of the Board either this evening or tomorrow, tentatively, and I will report on that next week.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Hardy, I'm assuming you have not had any.
I have not attended any boards yet.
Right. Commissioner Whitaker.
Nothing here.
Nothing there. Commissioner Catlet.
Same. Holiday season.
Good for you all. Other thing I have report, Gary and I, along with Jack, had the construction meeting with the Health Department. Everything there is on schedule, and most importantly, it's on budget. Drive wall will begin this week along with insulation, and the windows should be in by January 20th. That's what the date was.
What's the completion date on that? April issue.
Yeah. Let me drop back to our Board and Commission appointees. Commissioner Hardy, which I've already spoke to John about this earlier, will be assuming Mr. Barnhart's boards, with the exception of the Planning Commission. So John Hardy will be representing the Berkeley County Health Board, the Berkeley County Public Service Water District, Region Nine, WVU Extension Office, the NPO, Planning Commission in Talamon. Commissioner Whitaker will assume the Solid Waste Authority that was currently held by Mr. Barnhart. So Mr. Barnhart, I'm sorry, Mr. Whitaker will now have the Airport Authority, the Transit Authority, and the Solid Waste. Everybody else's committees remain the same. I think that we may need to make an adjustment with Mr. Boyd on the Library Board. He has, he's had a conflict with that and with his meeting schedule. So, but we'll address that maybe our next meeting. So that should take care of that. Next up.
One other thing on that.
Yes, sir.
District Justice Beat Watershed assignment that Jim Barnhart had. He asked me to take it over. I went to one of their meetings as a, just as an attendee. But someone said that was actually an appointment by the Governor, and you have to. It's not, okay. Told me he was appointed by the Governor, but if you would like for me to assume that role, then I'd be glad to do that. I think they meet every three months. It's a regional.
I certainly have no problem with that, but, I mean, do we need to work through the state to make sure that that's?
I think we can just check it out and make sure.
Yeah. Well, I guess maybe we'll have Tracy reach out and to see if that continues. The new Governor will point to it. Okay, next up is Will Laurinson, Judiciary Supervisor, sir. Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Hardy, Mr. Catlet.
Happy New Year.
Catlet, congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
This morning, we had, excuse me, 18 estates for final settlement. We have no interim settlements for the month of January 2025. All estates proposed for settlement here this morning are identical to those found in your read ahead. Additionally, all estates proposed for settlement here this morning have been legally or actually noticed of their proposed pending settlement status as prescribed by West Virginia law. Furthermore, my office has received no written notice of objection to date from any interested parties of these estates herein. Lastly, all claims of debt publicly filed against each of these estates have either been released as paid in part or in full by the creditors themselves, or the estate has been declared to be insolvent, meaning no probate assets remain to pay heirs, beneficiaries, and creditors alike. Without objection from any present interested party in the audience today, I ask for this Commission's consideration for the approval of the 18 estates for final settlement in the month of January 2025.
Heard the request from the Supervisor.
Would motion that we approve those estates recommended by our judiciary.
A second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, Will. Thank you.
That's all I have, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Happy New Year to you. Next up, Gary Wine on a discussion on the dive team equipment for the Sheriff's Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you're aware, on December 5th, you opened bids for grant-funded equipment for the Sheriff's Department Dive Team. You had four responses. The low bidder was an incomplete bid. After being reviewed by the administrative staff, their recommendation is to go with the next, which is the lowest responsible bid from Adorama at $30,409.81. Again, is grant-funded. There's a little bit overrun, less than $2,000, but the sheriff will pay that out of his funds that he has.
So that was, there was not a match to that grant or anything. That's great that we'll get some nice equipment out of that.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions for Gary on that? Okay, I need a motion to approve the recommendation for Adorama in amount of $30,409.81.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded. All, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thanks, sir.
You're welcome.
We're back to items on the, items from the public. Quick day.
Need a executive session for legal matters, please.
Okay, will be any.
Action taken? Possibly.
Okay. There being just nobody from the public here to speak, we do need time for executive session.
Move to go into executive session for legal matters?
A second, Dan.
Been properly moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you. Let the record show we are out of executive session and there will be action taken.
Mr. President, I move that, uh, we accept a settlement agreement between the Berkeley County Commission and the, uh, journal publication. That was, uh, that'll be for your observation by the public when I'm ready.
A second. A second.
Been properly moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. And that's going to take us to the bottom of the page. Gentlemen, need a motion to recess.
President, I motion we recess.
We're in recess.
Nothing changed at that chair.